No, 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 you're right. In office. Y'all have to smile me in the world where I heard. Everything's good. Yes, we just had to get an I G A at some point for the murder. Because we're having to give them some money. Something just like a gift or something.
Just in case.
I mean, that's one way to get a money is to pay for the bad. We might be reaching hard.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Wilson?
Please bow for prayer. Heavenly Father, we're gathered tonight to do your work. We ask you to bless each one who is here, who cares about the city of Canton. We thank you for this great city and for those who worked to help us make it better. We ask your blessings on the council, on the mayor, and those that work closely with us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Call to order, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, council meeting. We entertain approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or revisions? Not a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have some guests and visitors tonight. First, I have the honor of presenting a proclamation. And this is City of Canton Proclamation Number Two Zero Two Three Zero Eight One Two, National Health Care Center Week Twenty Twenty Three, Community Health Centers: A Roadmap to a Stronger America. Whereas for over fifty years, community health centers have provided health qua- high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary preventative healthcare in our nation's medically underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on America's healthcare system. Whereas as the country's largest primary care network, community health centers are the healthcare home for over thirty million Americans in over fourteen thousand communities across the nation nationwide. Community health centers, health centers serve as one, serve one in every five residents of rural areas. Whereas every day, community health centers develop new approaches to integrating a wide range of services beyond primary care, including oral health, vision, behavioral health, and pharmacy services to meet the needs and challenges of their communities. Whereas community health centers are governed by patient majority boards, ensuring their patients are engaged in their own healthcare decisions. Whereas community health centers are locally owned and operate as small businesses that serves as critical economic engines, helping to power local economies by generating eighty-five billion in economic activity and supporting more than five hundred thousand direct and indirect jobs. Whereas the community health center model continues to prove an effective means of overcoming barriers to healthcare access, including geography, income, and insurance status, improving health outcomes, and reducing healthcare system costs. Whereas National Health Center Week offers the opportunity to celebrate America's more than fourteen hundred community health center organizations with over fourteen thousand service delivery sites, including three thousand schools. We honor their dedicated staff, board members, patients, and all those responsible for their continued success and growth. Whereas during National Health Center Week, we celebrate the legacy of America's community health centers and their vital role in shaping the past, present, and future of America's healthcare system. Now therefore I, Bill Grant, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim August sixth through twelfth, twenty twenty-three, as National Health Center Week. I encourage all Americans to take part in this week by visiting their local health center and celebrating the important partnership between America's community health centers and the communities they serve. We're honored tonight to have representatives from our own local, local, uh, community health center, uh, Georgia Highlands Center, Medical Center, and, uh, we have, uh, their CEO, Todd Shiplett, and Eddie Ga- Ga- Gatan. I'm sorry, I'm not going to pronounce that right. The community outreach coordinator, and many representatives of their staff and organization. I'm going to ask you to join me down, uh, at the, uh, in front here for, for an opportunity to accept the proclamation and have a photo, please.
You don't want to stay for this exciting meeting.
I know, I know. They got work to do, so. Uh, next, we're, we're honored to have a, a presentation from Fire Chief Eddie Robinson from the Cherokee County Fire and Emergency Services, an update on the annual update on, on the services they provide to our city. Chief, it's always an honor to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Uh, on behalf of the men and women of Cherokee County Fire, it is my honor to come before you tonight and, uh, present, uh, a quick little update on the, the fire department. I do have two short videos that will be included in my presentation, and if I can just get started by showing this first one. Here we go.
Our mission is to work aggressively to preserve life and property, promote public safety, and foster economic growth here in Cherokee County.
Our vision is that we will be aggressive and competent firefighters, providing the most progressive emergency medical services in the state.
We will be excellent in all things in the service to our community.
The mental and physical ability to face adversity with focus and determination.
We have the strength to do what's right, even when doing what's right is hard.
The act of dedicating oneself in total effort to accomplish the mission.
A commitment to your faith, family, and C C F E S is the type that never comes into question.
We live according to a code of ethics that governs our behavior both on and off the job.
Do what you say and live in a respectful, honest, and honorable way with everyone.
So just a quick little video clip to kind of maybe set the stage and get us a little bit motivated. Uh, when I took over as Fire Chief from, uh, Chief Prather, uh, about a year and eight months ago now, um, you know, we had some conversation, and with us bringing the newer generations into the fire service, we felt like we sort of probably needed to do some rebrand. So we looked at our mission, vision, and values, and our mission statement, the word aggressively that you see there in the top, to work aggressively, uh, you know, to preserve life and property, that preserving life and property, it, that's the response piece of what we do. That's actually going to the emergencies, making a difference in people's lives, frankly, on the worst day of their lives. And then in the middle, we talk about the public education, and we feel like if we can prevent an emergency from happening in the first place through education, or teach people what to do in the event that they have an emergency, we're so much further ahead than we could ever be on the response side through the, through the prevention piece. And then the fostering economic growth, sometimes people goes, well, how can a fire department foster economic growth? It's really very simple. Businesses want to come to a community that has outstanding public safety, and Cherokee County Fire, I'm confident is providing that. If we can get the interstate highway open after an accident, just a few minutes quicker than, than maybe we normally would, that allows commerce to start moving, and that's, that's a lot of money. So, um, we put a lot of effort, and we're really proud of that, that mission with, with being aggressive. You see the word aggressive in our vision statement. We want to be excellent in everything that we do in, in Cherokee County. And then our, our three core values are simple: courage, commitment, and integrity. And if we tell our new hires, if you can't align yourself aside behind those three simple values, it's simple, you can't be one of us. Those are really the only absolutes that, that we, that we have as far as your requirements to continue employment with Cherokee County. So currently, our staffing is at four hundred, and, uh, I say currently, this is at the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, our staffing is four hundred and forty-five full-time positions and five part-time positions. One hundred and seventy-six of those positions are trained to the paramedic level, and then the two hundred and thirty-five are trained to the advanced D M T or E M T intermediate level. We're really proud of the fact that we obtained international accreditation. Uh, we work diligently for that, and what accreditation really does is it forces a fire department to continuously self-assess and look at ways that we can do the job that we do better and more efficiently. How can we save the taxpayer dollars and still provide the same great service? And, and we take that very ser- serious. The Commission on Fire Accreditation International, there's only three hundred and eight accredited fire departments in the world. And in Georgia, Cherokee County Fire was the fourteenth department to ever receive this, this international accreditation. So we're really proud of that. Some notable highlights, uh, yes, we did get a new fire chief, our, and I won't read every one of them to you, you can read them there, but our medical director, uh, Dr. Jill Mabley, she retired, uh, after helping us bring our, uh, medical services to a point that we're unmatched. And, and I truly believe that we've got the best equipment, we've got quality training, and I'll show you a video in a minute that, uh, will demonstrate how that quality training, the attitude of the people, the ability of the people through their training, is truly making a difference in, in people's life. Uh, we started a new incident command system for, uh, all of our type four or five, uh, fire incidents, which are the routine structure type fires that we respond to, and that incident command and control system, it's really helping us to be more efficient on an incident scene, get in there, get our searches done quickly, writ, you know, if there are victims, get those victims out, and at the same time, it helps us to provide some additional accountability and safety for our personnel, and that's, uh, that's really important to us. If you come on down the whis, you see Lucas devices and power assist stretchers, those Lucas devices are CPR assist machine, and those things perform perfect CPR. A person riding down the road in the back of an ambulance that's being jostled, tossed around because, you know, we're trying to get to the hospital, uh, it's difficult to maintain those perfect compressions to keep that circle, circulation, that oxygenation going. These machines do that for us. They're costly, but they do a phenomenal job, and they're making a, a huge difference in our EMS services already. So we'll move on from there. Uh, public safety, it, i- in general, it, it's not, it's not cheap. Outstanding public safety, um, is not cheap, and you can see that, you know, total between our fire and EMS, uh, budget last year was fifty-four, uh, million dollars. And because of the additional personnel that we're putting on this year, if this budget approves, uh, that, that budget will in- increase by about ten percent. But that allows us to put an additional firefighter at the downtown station, an additional firefighter at Station Eleven, as well as additional firefighters at Station Three Twenty-One, which, that's Hickory Flat up north, out at Station Nine in North Canton, down in Holly Springs. And when there's a big emergency inside of the city, all of those stations, depending on where that emergency is, will be responding into the city to help the two stations that we have here a- as well. So, um, obviously, a big part of that's personnel cost. So Splosh and ARPA was really good to us this year. Um, we used, uh, the ARPA fund, or, excuse me, the Splosh funds to, uh, increase our, our training capabilities at our fire training facility. We, we now have an EMS wing where we do all of our medical training, and we, it's pretty state-of-the-art. We've got mannequins in there, they actually have pulse, heart rates, and they can program them to demonstrate different types of illnesses and traumas and that kind of stuff, and the guys are getting really realistic training through, through this, uh, new addition. Uh, really proud, proud of that. Uh, some fire station renovations, uh, other equipment, uh, through ARPA, we bought, bought some ambulances with the ARPA funds, uh, self-contained breathing apparatus, uh, we replaced, uh, a hundred and twenty-five of those. We bought those Lucas CPR assist devices for every apparatus that we have, uh, ambulances and engines, uh, cert-, uh, that are serving throughout the county. And those power assist stretchers are already showing a great reduction in back injuries that we, that, back injury is pretty significant in our profession from lifting, uh, patients on stretchers and twisting and getting them in and out of those ambulances. So this is something I'm super proud of, and a lot of you guys came out and participated. We were able to place two new, uh, engines in, uh, service here in the city of Canton. Uh, it was a pretty fun event we had over here, uh, had some kids and everybody join us in pushing those engines in and celebrating those new engines coming, uh, coming into the city. And, uh, again, a fire engine, uh, if we order one today, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So these engines will serve the city for ten to twelve to maybe fifteen years and a first out capacity, and then they'll go into a reserve fleet for an additional five years, and then they'll rotate out of the fleet after that. So it's a twenty-year purchase when we, when we make these purchases, and those, uh, those, uh, engines were provided through Splosh funds. So our call volume total last year, we were just over thirty-two thousand. We'll break thirty-five thousand this year, that's countywide. Um, and you can see, and I not, I cannot see well enough, I don't think, um, I can see that the response times for the city of Canton is on an EMS call there, we're at six eighteen on the average and six nineteen on our fire response, and those, those are, those are fair response times. That ninetieth percentile, it means on ninety out of a hundred calls, we're better than those higher marks, but looking at that average is what really, uh, really tells the story. You'll note, uh, interesting statistic is on that top line, only about two hundred and ten of those responses were structured fires. Well, we actually put hoes on the ground and had to go fight fire. Twenty-two thousand nine fifty were EMS, medical-related calls. So yes, it's always going to be a, a, a lower frequency, a high priority event when we have a structured fire, but I feel like where the fire department's making the, having the biggest impact is through our EMS operations. Training, training, we take it very serious, uh, hundred and twenty-one thousand hours of incumbent training. We graduated twenty-nine new recruits, uh, we had twenty-two, uh, firefighters completed our in-house accredited, uh, paramedic training program, uh, and, uh, even though they graduated in June of twenty twenty-three, they were in class the entire, uh, year through twenty twenty-two. It's about an eighteen-month, uh, process. And this is some of the prevention education stuff I talked about. We have a division that's referred to as community risk reduction, and this just shows all the different CPR classes, life vest, uh, bike helmets, uh, car seats, there's just so much stuff they do. The close before you doze campaign, I hope every, uh, person on the, on the council, as well as all your constituents, will close those bedroom doors when they go to bed at night, super important. Have working smoke detectors on every level of your house, test those smoke detectors, make sure they function. Uh, that early notification is what's going to save your life in, in a structured fire. I love the way the firefighters interact with the kids along with the, the community risk reduction vision, they do a great job. We promoted a, a lot of people last year. We are now, we now have an officership at every fire station throughout, uh, Cherokee County. That was twenty years in the making, so I'm glad that, uh, you know, through the support of, uh, Mr. Morton and the commissioners, we were, we were able to get there, and I, I really appreciate that. We did lose some people to retirement, uh, you guys are aware, after thirty-five years, Chief Tim Prather, uh, moved just north, so he's still there, and I still call him from time to time, and he calls me from time to time, too, but mainly when he needs stuff. I call him when I need advice. Uh, at any rate, we lost some additional people, and every time we lose a person, all those years of experience go with them, and then we hire a person in at eighteen, nineteen, twenty years old. So those additional officers, it's really becoming more and more prudent that we have those officers with that experience at every station. And I'd like for you to meet Little Austin. Little Austin, you guys may have seen him on some of our social media. Uh, Little Austin's a cool kid. He, uh, he is a, a patient that is battling cancer, he has leukemia, and, uh, we just decided we was going to make Austin a little firefighter, so he's our junior firefighter. I put this slide in there just to show you that this is another way we serve, and through our core values, we believe in this. We believe in reaching out in the community and having a presence. So yeah, you may see a fire apparatus at a ballgame, I'm all about that. I would rather them be out in the community, so the community's, this, this fire department belongs to this community, and we recognize that. We know who our bosses are. We work through you guys, but we know that the citizens are who we are actually, actually working for, and we take great pride in that. And this is just a great little guy right here. So, um, I'm going to show you a quick video. When I say quick, it's actually about four minutes long, I know you ready to get going, but it really highlights the equipment and the service that we provide, and this is it.
I was at work, and he called me and said, I don't feel good. And he never calls just to say I don't feel good, so I knew something was wrong, so I jumped in my car and I started heading home, and it's about a twenty-five minute drive from, from my office to the house, and as I'm talking to him, he told me I was about to pass out, and I said, well, did you get up too fast? And he said, no. He said, you know, I just don't feel right, my jaw hurts, I think you need to call the, the nine-one-one and have them come out. And, um, he said, okay. He called nine-one-one, and within, God, less than five minutes, they were at our house. So they took care of him and got him settled in and took him to Kennesaw. And when I got to the house, um, one of the paramedics was still there, they waited for me, and said, your husband has had a heart attack, he's on his way to Kennesaw. And I said, okay, thank you very much. And, um, so then I left, headed on to the hospital, and then my phone rang, he said, well, it looks like I've had a heart attack and I'm on my way to the hospital. I said, yes, I said, the paramedic said, I said, I'll see you up there. And he said, okay. I said, I love you, and he says, I love you, too. And that was the last time I spoke to him for three and a half weeks. At that point, I didn't know if I would ever talk to him again. So, um, I got to the hospital, he was in, um, in the cath lab, they, they, uh, put two stents in him, he had blockage, he stayed in C D I C U for, uh, three and a half weeks. He woke up on June second. The paramedics, the firemen, they were there, they were the first step. If it hadn't been for them, he would not be here, because we stayed one step ahead, and that first step was, was the paramedics, the firemen. So we really appreciated everything that they did. The hospital was awesome, nurses, doctors, we're so thankful for everything that everyone did. And I'll hand that home to him.
So with that, um, that's just an example of what we do, and a couple of things that I really like to highlight in that video is, did you hear her say that the paramedics waited there for me? He was on the way to the hospital. We didn't, that's, we don't train that, that's not in the job description. That was a decision that was made by a paramedic in the field to wait on his wife to get home to ensure the house was locked up and secured, and she knew where they, he was going, and frankly, to make sure that she was in a condition to take herself to meet him at the hospital. We would have taken her had, had she not been. Super proud of that kind of stuff. One of those ambulances fully equipped's about three hundred and forty or fifty, fifty thousand dollars. So, um, so many people I could thank. First off, I have to thank the men and women of Cherokee Fire, I've got my deputy chiefs with me tonight, they do a fabulous job, they run the fire department. Along with those deputy chiefs or our administrative staff, these trucks don't go up and these trucks don't roll without the people that work in, in the admin- in administration, and I recognize that, and I like to highlight those people. Mr. Peppers, Mr. Ingram, they've been, been great, you guys have all been great, I think it's been a great relationship so far, um, and, uh, I look forward to continuing to serve the citizens here in, uh, in Canton and, and all of Cherokee County, and if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, we appreciate your report, and we thank all the men and women of Cherokee Fire and Emergency Services, we appreciate their courage, commitment, and integrity. Uh, congratulations on your international accreditation, you make all of us proud, we're very proud of that achievement and appreciate what you do for our citizens on a daily basis, and, uh, uh, appreciate the report, great report tonight. So I'd be remiss if I didn't ask if you have any updates on a downtown replacement station, and I ask you every time, but I'm going to ask again, so someone's going to ask me, so just.
We, we're still working really hard. Actually, I met with, uh, the county manager and, and Mr. Ingram, Mr. Peppers this week, as a matter of fact, and had some conversation and some strategies. I'd love to be able to tell you, yes, we've got that place right there and we're building this station, we're not there yet. Uh, we're continuing the funding, we're, we're pretty well where we need to be with, uh, actually building the station, we've just got to determine what facility we're going to use.
I appreciate.
They're not making any more land.
Unfortunately not, so I appreciate that.
That is still very much a priority of mine, though.
I understand, I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Chief? Thanks so much, sir, appreciate it. Appreciate you guys joining us tonight, so.
As I walk away, please come and visit the fire stations, and that's citizens, you guys, anybody, they're always open, those fire stations belong to you, that equipment belongs to you, and we love having people come by and visit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. You have in your packet, uh, the draft minutes for our council meeting on August the third. Are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have, uh, another informational update tonight, and that is, uh, an update from our police chief, Mayor Field, on, uh, our police department, so. Great evening and updates on public safety tonight. Couldn't ask for more. Also, happy to have Pastor Brando join us tonight as well, so.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mayor and Council, it's great seeing y'all. We, uh, I asked Pastor Brando to join me up here because the first things we want to talk about is some of our community outreach, and, uh, Pastor Brando is a part of that, is a lot of our community is, but, uh, today we had our coffee with the cop, we had it at Bazaar Coffee and had a, had a big turnout there. We, some of us were here at training at City Hall, but I was told it was, and saw the pictures, and it was a pretty, pretty nice, uh, turnout for us. The next thing, oh, I'm the one doing this now, huh? Okay. The next thing is, the, uh, our co- our, uh, let me do that one, is the, uh, Citizens Police Academy, and again, Pastor Brando was in our Citizens Police Academy, I know some of y'all have been in our Citizens Police Academy, but that's, uh, that's on our Facebook now for applications. I think, uh, Sergeant Cromer has, she's running that, said they've already got fifteen, sixteen applications like the first day they put it out. already got 15, 16 applications like the first day they put it out. So. That, that is always a, a big hit with our citizens. It's, it starts September 14th and it, it runs, I think, nine weeks to November 9th. And for those of y'all that's been in it, know that we go through every unit and the police department comes in, talks about what they do. We do a thing on use of force. We do a day where we go to the range and everyone gets to fire the weapons that we, we fire. So it's a, it's a, it's a really learning thing. I mean, I can't, I always, when I, when I open it up the very first day, I always tell citizens that, you know, we work for the citizens and as a citizen, our authority comes from you. And you have men and women who are carrying guns and badges. You have a responsibility as a citizen to know what those men and women are doing and why they do what they do and how they do what they do. I think, so I think it's a great commitment for a citizen to spend nine weeks to come in. I think this is going to be every Thursday night for nine weeks, to come in to know what exactly is going on with our police department. Because when we see those incidents that happen across the country, you should know as a citizen in the city of Canton, that's not how my police department works. That's not how my police department acts. And I know that. And a, and a part of that academy is a ride along with the officers. I was just talking to Pastor Brando and he told me his guy, he missed his because he had something come up. I said, well, we still owe you one. So come on out and ride with us. I did tell him, oh, he's going to spend some of his time translating when he gets out on the street. So we'll put him to work. But Pastor Brando, did you want to say anything about the Citizens Police Academy?
I think it's a very, very good training. So the information that we can learn is amazing. So we, sometimes we don't know what is the really situation the police department is, you know, running away of the city. But for me, when we went to the prison, to the jail, it was amazing, the opportunity to know how everything, you know. I think it's very, very good to try to, you know, expand the information for the community that they can try to get information about the police. I, I think it, for me, was very, very good.
I'm always amazed that going to the jail seems to be one of the favorite things that everyone does. Whenever I look at the curriculum, I'm like, well, nobody's going to want to go to the jail. And then the next class after the jail, that's all everybody wants to talk about is the jails.
In that context, right?
Those, those.
We can walk back out.
So that's coming up. And thank you for being a part of that. And then, of course, our big event of the year, our annual event. And give all credit to Pastor Brando. For three years ago, hard to believe, he had this vision, this dream of bringing this together. And I look back on it, the last meeting we were in, everything's so organized now and there's, there's this and that. We really didn't know what we were doing in that first year. I don't even know how that worked out. But I always tell the story that the end of that very first day, me and you were standing out in that field and you said, did you think it was going to be this big? And I said, no, I didn't. So that is coming up, September 9th. I, and you may have better information. I hear we have 17 different countries that are going to be represented out there. We have the mariachi band. And that's a big, that's a big thing for us because it's easier to book a condo in Panama City than it is to book the mariachi band. And it's always the last minute before we finally get the approval that they're coming. And that they're coming this year. So we're all excited. And then there's going to be several different countries that are going to be doing different dances in their, in their, their clothing. So Pastor, if you'd like to talk about that, that's, I know this is close to you.
Thank, one of the most important things right now is, I receive the emails, how many vendors and businesses are trying to be in this, in the event. I think more than 40 already send information. So we have 17 countries and more countries are trying to, you know, to be included, but it's, it's too late, too late to do it. But it is going to be growing and growing. I, we expect more than 2,000 people this year. So it's going to be big. And I hope, and I really thank you for, because I know you are investing in this. You believe in this. Even, we hope that we can have the best, the best even in the Canton.
Don't eat breakfast before you go.
No.
Lot of food.
Well, that was the fun stuff to talk about. So I want to have a, a discussion on, on crime statistics. You've probably noticed that you haven't seen me quarterly this year in front of you talking about crime statistics. And, and I think we had a discussion about a year and a half ago about us moving to the, the NIBRERS reporting system. So prior to that, we, we used, the federal government had a format for reporting crime. Every agency in the country did it. It was called UCR or unify, I'm sorry, Uniform Crime Reporting. That actually started in the 1930s. The FBI started that in the 1930s. And it ran all the way to 2021 before they changed over to something different. So the difference is this NIBRERS, which is National Incident-Based Reporting System, I had to write that down. The difference is, and if, if you remember the conversations we had, is under UCR, when you had a crime occur, whatever the most top crime that occurred is how you logged that. That's how you reported that. That's how every police department did, every law enforcement in the country. Under NIBRERS, any crime that occurs during that incident is also reported. So to give you a, kind of an explanation or an example, and this is kind of, this isn't over exaggerated, but I think it shows the point. If in 2022, you only had one crime occur, 2022, only one, and it was, and this is something that did not occur in the city of Canton or any jurisdiction, all the names have been changed to protect the innocent, which only a few of us will probably even know where, where that comes from. But if you had one crime in 2022, and let's say a, a person walked into a convenience store and there were five people, including the clerk, in the store, and that person pulled a weapon and pointed it at all five people in there, and then had the clerk give them the money, and then punched three people in that store, and then walked out and on his way out, reached down and grabbed a 12 pack of Diet Pepsi and walked out. In 2022, that would be armed robbery. That's how that would be reported. If you only had one crime in 2023, and it was the exact same thing, that would be reported as armed robbery, five ag assaults, three simple batteries and one shoplifting. So if you tried to compare 2022 to 2023, you would have five ag assaults. You'd be up 500% on ag assault, even though it was the exact same crime that happened to you in 2022. Simple battery, you'd be up 300%. So that's the difference. It truly is apples and oranges. So for us to say, we started NIBRERS this year. So when I go to our crime analyst and say, hey, I, I got to be able to show some type of comparison. And he says, there, there is none. That you can't do that because what I just explained to you, the numbers aren't going to be the same. And it's going to look like you have this crime problem that you don't have. It's just how we report it. Now, I, I am of the opinion that the NIBRERS is the better way to report it because it gives you a true picture of every crime that occurred that registers under NIBRERS, which is just, I think there's 24 crimes that they look at. So it's, and then you throw in that we went to our new RMS system, which thank you to y'all for that, which has been great, but it's been kind of a perfect storm. So we will need a year to get the base on NIBRERS before we can go into the next year to say where we're at compared to the year before, if that makes sense. So that's kind of where we're at. Now, if you specifically ask me, can you tell us how many this crime we've had? Yes, we can do that. But I couldn't tell you how it compares to last year because we didn't report it that way last year. So that's kind of where we're at on, on that. If anyone has any questions.
I guess with that being said, chief, are there any noticeable trends? I mean, any, in any categories or violent crimes up, down? I mean, compared to how they've been in the past or?
I would say anecdotally that it, there's some, there's some serious crimes that we had last year that we have not seen this year. There is domestic violence still, probably is, when we talk about violent crime, domestic violence is probably, it, it is going to be our leading area. And we talked about a couple of times last year that the law had changed for strangulation, ag assault strangulation. And our officers went through a lot of training for that, which really helped some identify strangulation. And I read reports every day where our officers go on a domestic and when they're talking to the victim, they notice the red marks on the throat and say, did you get grabbed by, did someone put strands on? Well, yes. Well, but a lot of times, like a lot of crimes, victims don't want to talk about it. They don't want to go into it until the officer has the training and the probing questions to say, at any time, did you lose consciousness? There's a, there's a whole checklist on strangulation. And so because of that, a lot of the simple batteries, and we've talked about this before, that we saw in probably 2021, now are felony ag assault strangulation. But again, it's the right thing to do. I'm glad the law did change for that. And I'm glad our officers have been trained on that. As far as trends, one of the things we saw, we have seen this year is business burglaries. The business burglaries, though, are a, a ring, a group of people that are hitting the metro Atlanta area. And I mean, all over the metro Atlanta area. They've hit, up here, they've hit Cherokee, they've hit Holly Springs, they've hit us, but they've hit Alpharetta, they've hit Sandy Springs, they've hit Dunwoody, they've hit Atlanta, Cobb County's got hit several times by them and even tried to chase them. And we know that it's, it's the same group because of our flock cameras. We can, we can track them from when they hit. We can track them to everywhere they go, but we don't know who the, because the cars are in, or stolen cars or their paper tags. We know it's the same vehicle. So we can track them. There are numerous task forces that are working this, including the GBI. My understanding is that there are suspects that have been identified and they're looking at doing some things with that. But we, we, we had three of those burglaries. And the burglary MO on that is that they're in and out within 35 to 40 seconds. So we're getting the alarm and responding within a minute and they're gone. They go through the front doors and grab the safe and take off with the safe. So that is the only trend that I could, I could say that we've had. You know, we had the, the case a couple of months ago where we ended up with, I think it was actually last month, 29 or 30 enter and autos in two subdivisions. But we also arrested the suspects the next morning. Now, when you have a case, when, as we've talked about before, we're very blessed that we have very low crime numbers. When you have a night where you have 30 enter and autos in Canton, that blows your numbers up. But the good thing of that is, we got the suspects and all property was returned to the, to the victims. So I think, Mayor, that's anecdotally, without me really looking at some things, that would be the trends I have seen.
No, I appreciate that information. I just think as we change and transition from how we used to communicate that to our citizens, just how we just be cognizant of how we communicate, you know, in the interim, you know, that our citizens are safe and the wonderful job your team continues to do. I know we sent our press release on the entering auto case and the excellent job that the team did and, and kudos to them. But I appreciate the information and report. So.
Thank you, Mayor. The last thing is, we've had some, some hiring going on. We are two openings right now, which is a long way from the nine openings that we were several months ago. And I can tell you that when I go, I just came back from the Georgia Chiefs Conference in Savannah. And when, that's the number one question chiefs ask you when they walk up to you. Hey, how's, how many openings y'all got? And when you say two, we're, we're in a good position. People, people are pretty envious of that. And that, that has a lot to do with a lot of the things that this council and the mayor and city managers did for us. It's a very attractive department and we're not really having, as, not really having as much difficulty recruiting and, and retaining our officers. But Officer Brandon Craig graduated the academy, I think, last month. He's now in daily obs, daily observation. He's with FTO. He came to us after serving his country in the United States Marine Corps. And he's doing very well in our training program. I just was out on, on a call with him a few minutes, or a few hours ago. Robert Severance came from Atlanta Police Department. He spent 18 years with Atlanta Police Department and came here. I spoke with him the other day and it, it really helped me in my, my insight was that, he said, you know, one of the things I really appreciate about being here is in Atlanta, you're going from call to call to call to call. Here, you actually get a chance to help people. When you go out on a domestic, you actually get to spend time and try and help people. When you go out on whatever theft, you get to try and help people. And, you know, I see that every day, but sometimes when you see it every day, it doesn't really strike until you hear somebody else say it. So I was, I was very appreciative of that. But he's actually in our abbreviated field training program because of all his years of experience. And he will probably be cut loose in a, in a week. We have two in the academy right now. Jesse Vaughn is in North Central Georgia Academy. He came to us after serving his country in the United States Army. He is still serving his country in the US National Guard, in the Army National Guard. And we have Daniel Madranda. He is in the academy also. He came to us from the great state of New Jersey. So, so you'll know when you talk to him. But he's adapting well. But we're very excited about Daniel because he's also fluent in Spanish. And that is our updates. Is there any questions, Mayor and Council?
Great. Ms. Smith?
Thanks. Thanks, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the jail really is the best day of the Citizens Police Academy. It's fascinating stuff.
I hear it enough. It must be true.
Um, I just wanted to review really quickly. Mr. Peppers, could you remind us what portion of our budget goes to our police department? Just, I mean, round numbers.
About six million. About 50% goes to the police department, public safety. Police and fire combined are a little over 11 million of the general fund. We put a lot of money into public safety. And, you know, and it's paid off specifically, as the chief said. When I go to city or county manager association meetings, I hear about this police department has 30 vacancies. I think our sheriff's department right now has got 50 plus vacancies. We don't have that. Part of the reason why we don't have that is we pay people what it takes to get them in the job. And we give them the resources and the training to do the job. And we make sure that they feel like they're part of a family and a team here so that they want to come to work every day and they want to serve our citizens. So we, we've been very blessed. But it does take money to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and great leadership to, so kudos, chief, to you and the team.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you. Do we have any other announcements, sir? Any other information to be shared tonight?
I do have one, Mayor, if I may. This coming Tuesday, August 22nd at 11:30 in the morning, I'm going to have the opportunity to join the folks at the Georgia Home Builders Association meeting in, in Woodstock. It's actually the Aero Exterminating Training Center off of Highway 92. And so at that event, I will be speaking about all the things, housing that's going on in Canton, those things we've accomplished, those things we're working on and kind of our vision for the future. So really looking forward to that. I would like to invite council and any, any member of the public that would like to attend to please come down. I can't speak for the capacity there, but certainly I want to extend that invitation to folks that would like to join us.
Great. Thanking Councilman Tolan. Any other announcements? Time for our 10-minute public input. And we have one member signed up, Ms. Amy Moore. Please come to podium and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Amy Moore and I am the owner of Pedal Punk ATL. And my address is 8990 Main Street, Woodstock, Georgia. I'm currently a resident in Woodstock and a small business owner. And I have information I'd like to pass to you for you to look at so you can kind of understand what I'm, what I'm speaking to. This is a 12-passenger pedicab that operates in the city of Woodstock around the Entertainment District. And we are proposing to bring one here to Canton and have spoken with Angie and Valinda about merging the mill area with the downtown area by using one of these pedicab services. What I've provided you is just a basic, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't have anything more prepared. This is kind of a last minute add-on. And so I'm just, just giving you a little bit of preliminary information. But I did want to give to you the ordinances from the city of Woodstock that they've developed. It took us quite a while to revamp the pedicab ordinances. from the city of Woodstock that they've developed. It took us quite a while to revamp the pedicab ordinances in Woodstock. And so I wanted you to have a copy of that so that you had something to go by if this would something, would be something that you could consider. And we're talking about bringing in more tourism to the city of Canton and being able to safely and in a fun, active way, bring people back and forth between the mill and the city of Canton. Pedal Punk, the actual name Punk is Punk as in somebody harasses somebody else. Punk is based on steampunk and era of steampunk mixing wood and metals, kind of like they do in many of the establishments in the city of Woodstock and Canton as well. We do not serve anything from the bike. However, we do allow people to bring their adult beverages onboard, and they're only allowed to have one 16-ounce beverage at a time. We try to feed the local establishments by stopping along the way. If somebody needs to refresh their beverage or haven't had one and needs to get one, we, we stop and let them off, and they're able to get a refreshment and get back on the bike, and then we, we move on. The city of Woodstock has a walkable area. The Entertainment District is so walkable. So basically, our rides have been entertainment-based, and we have a website where you can book ahead of time, or you can have walk-up riders come to the bike and just pay by the seat. So you can book the whole bike for a party. We've had several birthday parties. We started in December, so we had a couple of Christmas parties. And we've actually had some teen and pre-teen birthday parties onboard too, obviously, no alcohol. Anytime there's a minor onboard, no alcohol, even if there are adults. And those kids just really had a great time. They got their bubble teas and rode around and just really thought it was great. They're pedaling. There is a motor assist, so they don't have to pedal if they don't want to pedal. A couple of the seats do not have pedaling mechanisms just because of the design of the, the pedicab. And it's just been a lot of fun down in Woodstock and would love to bring that same concept here, although a different model in that we would be able to have more transportation along those two, between the two areas. So I just wanted to present that to you. I have, one of the things that we had a holdup in Woodstock over the past couple of years, it did take me about two years, business going in Woodstock, was the storage of the bike. And so we ended up behind a local business in a shipping container. So now we have the bike stored in a shipping container and have talked to Mike Murphy at Murf Surf about collaborating moving forward about storage of the bike down by the river. And so that's just another conversation that needs to happen with Ms. Cox and Dana Cox and, and the mill as well. So a little bit about myself, I'm an occupational therapist in the Cobb County School System, and I've been an occupational therapist for 34 years. I was at one of the first schools to be quarantined when COVID hit. And I thought, what, what is our career going to look like now? What are we going to do? You know, we may never go back face to face. We did do virtual learning for a little over a year. We still have some families that are still doing virtual learning. But I wanted to find something that people could do actively in the community. The bike, I love riding bikes. I'm a bike rider. There's a lot of active people, residents in Woodstock that run and jog and, and bike. So I thought, well, this would be a great way to merge the social piece of the Entertainment District and have an alternate way of entertaining people that's active as well. And you're outside, so if, you know, during COVID, a lot of the first things that opened up were the outdoor activities. So this was one alternative that I had come up with, and just thought that Woodstock needed that in their texture of their landscape. And I feel like it would be a great addition to the city of Canton as well. Do you have any questions?
Thanks. We, we don't allow dialogue. It's just this public input, but thank you for the information. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no old business tonight. We only have one item of new business, and that is a discussion revisions to the Unified Development Code for consolidation of zoning districts. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an item that has been discussed through our abeyance period, modifying our Unified Development Code by either eliminating or consolidating some of our zoning districts. Discussion has been held as to having only a single R zoning district, which would allow the development of properties with a minimum lot size established, setbacks established. And if a developer wished to build to that particular model, he would not need any special approvals. If they wanted to deviate from that, then that would require them coming before this elected body and asking for, I don't want to say exceptions to that, but to what he would like to develop to, whether it's smaller lots, smaller buffers, smaller setbacks, larger lot coverage. That's something that we're still looking at as to what the ideal R approval or allowed category would be. We're also looking at eliminating the RA6 district and combining that with R8. In the commercial, we have general commercial, neighborhood commercial, and I believe we only have two pieces of property in the city that is owned neighborhood commercial. So we're looking at eliminating the NC district and combining that with general commercial, eliminating the PD zoning districts and just keeping PD a mixed use and PD residential. That's the thought that the staff has had. If, if there's any other questions or concerns or ideas that you folks may have, we're certainly interested in hearing those.
Thank you. No, we're just kind of looking at the map for the first time, and I think kind of understanding that kind of nuances of this, going in a little bit more depth. I'm not sure where we kind of go to from this. But you want to have any questions for Mr. Green at this time, or?
I do, Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Green, this is really helpful information. The map is great. You know, there's pretty similar from the current to the proposed. I think what also might be helpful for me and probably council and particularly our citizens is, you know, kind of, kind of zone by zone, if you will, the proposed changes, if you, if you could create a document that kind of shows the rationale behind the proposed changes and the benefits and any detriment that that change or, or costs that that change might bring to future developers. I think that would help me in my own mind solidify exactly what we're talking about doing and the changes that we're considering making. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Sort of a compare and contrast, if you will.
If this is to be implemented or updated, there's a lot of changes to the code that would have to take place because there is a verbiage, particularly in chapter one of the UDC that describes these different zoning districts. So it's not just simply consolidating these districts.
Right.
Eliminating. There's, and this is one ordinance change. And I think I've got 11 on the list right now throughout the code of ordinances or the UDC to be done that, that we're working on.
And I know, I know, one, one goal is to, to simplify and consolidate, which, you know, we've talked about, and certainly this map seems to do a great job of. And I know there were certain areas of the city where we're looking at where some changes need to occur. If you could, when you're preparing that document, I mean, there's certain areas of the city where the majority of the changes are being proposed and the rationale behind that. I mean, I know as we get further along in this process, we'll be having public input sessions and, and hearings over this. But again, I think just making sure we get to a place where we can understand what questions we need to ask in this. Any other questions at this time? And I know this map looks relatively simple, but I also appreciate all the work and thought that's gone in to get, get to this point. So I know it's not simple, so.
Well, I will give credit to Elena and our GAF department chief, the one that come up with both maps and especially the draft map where we were consolidating some districts and eliminating other ones. So she did a very, a very good job with that.
Please pass along our thanks. So we'll look forward to, to delving this in, in greater detail as, as we move forward. But good progress. Thank you. Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. First thing I wanted to mention to you is we do have our Team Member of the Month that we want to recognize, Ms. Audrey Musial. If you, if you've been around City Hall, you know Audrey. She keeps our facilities clean. She keeps our facilities safe. She's always a bright face for everybody that walks in. Audrey's been with us now almost six years, I think. And, and one of the first things that we decided as a city was that if we wanted to take care of our facilities, we wanted to have our own staff that were doing that care for us. And so we brought Audrey in, and she's been a member of our team since then. She does such a wonderful job. Her colleagues that, that recommended her for the award for, for the month of July basically said, she comes in and she's always helping, you know, there's no task too small for her. There's no time when you need an extra hand that she's not there to provide it. And so we're very excited to be able to recognize her as the Team Member of the Month for July. Next week, we will have guests coming in from across the state of Georgia for the Georgia Downtown Association Conference. Ms. Valinda Hardy in our Downtown Development Office put forth a proposal to host that conference last year, and Canton was selected. And so we will have, you know, 300-plus downtown professionals, historic preservationists that come into the community next week for education and training. Monday, most of them will be in training sessions, all-day training sessions that are required of different boards and organizations under state law. Tuesday and Wednesday will be more concurrent sessions and mobile tours. There'll be an opportunity for those individuals to be out in the community and learn from our businesses, learn from our staff, our elected officials, and peers from other communities. A lot of the activities will take place at the mill and also here in downtown. On Tuesday night, we're very excited because we'll be hosting Terrific Tuesday. So think about First Friday. We wanted to show off how we do those events for those from other communities around the state. So we'll have the stage out. It'll be just like a, a regular First Friday, but on a Tuesday night. And so we hope you'll come out to that and join us at 6 o'clock. There's an awards event at the Canton Theater one night. And then most of those individuals will do some day-long excursions on Thursday that include rafting trips on the river, that include bike rides in the parks and things like that so they can also get out in our community. So I hope that, I hope that you will see some of those folks with name tags around and, and say hello to them. I did want to mention on this particular item about Pedal Punk, we are familiar with the organization, and we have sat down with the city attorney to look at our ordinance, see what it would take to change our ordinances for that type of youth. So if council wants to put that on an agenda item for a further discussion at an upcoming meeting, we believe we've got the information that we can provide to you and let you know what changes would be required to do that. The operations report for the month of July is on the city website. I believe you've got a copy of it as well. Let me know if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer anything that you have for me tonight.
Questions for Mr. Peppers?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your report. Any council introduced items? Don't have anything. I, I did want to just say how excited we are to be hosting. I think there's 300 people from across the state coming to our downtown, coming to our city to see how we do things in the coolest small town in America. And so we're excited to, to host people from around the state and other Main Street programs and downtown associations. And I want to thank our team and, and Public Works, I think, been a big part. It's been, been really scrubbing our sidewalks and, and really downtown is just looking amazing and just preparing to, to host all of our visitors and just all the hard work that has gone in to making sure that we have a, put on a great impression. So I'm, I'm just impressed. I'm impressed with how our downtown looks every day, but I've seen comments and people commenting, and they've noticed the work that's gone into this. So I know we're, we'll be picture-perfect ready for their arrival, and it's just very exciting. And, and I just want to thank all the hard work that's gone in and preparing for that, so. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Motion to adjourn the executive session for real estate litigation and personnel.
Second.
The motion is second. All the members say aye?
Aye.
Pose name. All members vote for the motion. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.